A little past 10, go right into the consent agenda. Melanie?
Approval of payroll, July 22nd, 2022. Approval of claims, July 14th, 21st, 28th, 2022. Approval of minutes, July 12th, 2022.
Okay, so that's the consent agenda. Throw it to the floor for action.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on a consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up for the commissioners, we're going to move right into our agenda. We have recognition of the ARPA subcommittee members. I'm going to turn this over to Madam Auditor.
Thank you. If it's okay, I'm going to go over by that.
Sure, wherever you want.
Okay. Well, thank you county commissioners, and especially thank you to Commissioner President Jeff Good for putting this presentation on this particular meeting agenda. Later on in the meeting, you will be asked to give second reading and final approval to the next phase of our county's American Rescue Plan Expenditure Plan. Today, we would like to publicly thank and commend all of the people who helped us get to this point. As a refresher, you will remember that you, the commissioners, accepted a proposal by Commissioner Blaney to form a steering committee to oversee this process, as well as the establishment of four subcommittees. The job of these subcommittees was to evaluate all of the proposals that were submitted from outside groups and county organizations, seeking a share of our county's ARPA allocation. This was not an easy task. At the very beginning, we had more than 60 applications, and the amount of the funding that was requested far exceeded the available amount. But the subcommittee members rose to the challenge. They got to work. They met in a total of 23 public meetings over the course of about 10 weeks. They listened to the presentations. They asked questions. They ranked and scored the proposals. More than 80 hours of meeting time was recorded, and that doesn't include all of the individual work that the committee members did. And I know that there were committee members who spent a fair amount of time outside of the meetings, because many of them called me and asked to clarify things or to talk about the U.S. Treasury's final rule. So I think that the subcommittee members really took their tasks seriously, and the end result, I think most people will agree, is a spending plan that most people can be very proud of, because there's a wide diversity of programs and services that are going to be improving the lives of Porter County residents. So with that, I'd like to now recognize these subcommittee members. What I'd like to do is go committee by committee, and when I call your name, come on up here, and then we will have a group photo. Okay, so we're going to begin with the Behavioral Health and Social Services Committee. This committee was charged with looking at applications that dealt with behavioral health, substance abuse, housing homelessness, and other social service programs. As a result of their efforts, $3.48 million plus will be going to eight nonprofits for programs such as new affordable housing, emergency shelter, a new 24/7 crisis center, expansion of our recovery center, and other behavioral health services. So please join me in recognizing these subcommittee members. Representing the county commissioners is the Chair of the Subcommittee, Commissioner Jim Biggs. Representing the county council is Council members Mike Brechner and Greg Sims. Citizen appointees, Robin Lane and Mitch Peters. And non-voting technical advisors, the following township trustees, Brandon Clancy from Portage Township, Jesse Harper from Center Township, George Tappel from Union Township, and Ed Morales from Porter Township. Thank you, everyone. You're messing me up here. Maybe I have these in order. If I have them out of order, it just seems to have to look... Okay, good. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we'll try to... We'll recognize the nonprofits and employer subcommittee. This subcommittee was tasked with looking at applications from nonprofit groups that suffered financially due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And if anyone followed this process, you know that this subcommittee had the single greatest number of applications and the single greatest number of funding requests. It was a big task for them to get through, but they did it. As a result of their efforts, more than $5.5 million will be available to 10 different non-for-profit organizations for projects such as expansion of childcare, workforce development, public safety training, expansion of meals on wheels, and outdoor recreation projects. So please join me in recognizing the members of this subcommittee. Representing the county commissioners, Chair Jim Biggs. Come on up. Jim Biggs had the distinction of being the one county commissioner who chaired both two subcommittees. He lucked out. Representing the county council is Mike Brechner and Eric Wagner, and citizen appointees Ruth Vance and Rebecca Tomerlin. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we'd like to recognize the Infrastructure and Facilities Subcommittee. This subcommittee had the job of looking at proposals that fit within the U.S. Treasury's category called Investments in Infrastructure, along with other county building projects and other projects that were proposed. As a result of their endeavors, more than $7.17 million will be available for various projects, including stormwater projects, wetland restoration projects, improvements to our Expo Center, and improvements to the Pleasant Township pool. Please join us in recognizing these subcommittee members representing the Porter County Commissioners is the Chair of the Subcommittee, Jeff Good. Representing the county council was Sylvia Graham and Mike Jessen, and citizen appointees Curtis Stridelmeier and James Hazard. And we have a technical non-voting member, Mike Mabatney. So we... How about me? No? Thank you very much. Okay, now gave you the focus. And last but not least, we have recognition of our County COVID-19 Response Subcommittee. This subcommittee dealt with projects that dealt in some form or fashion with mitigation and prevention measures for COVID-19, possible future variants, and possible outbreaks of other types of public health hazards. So as a result of their efforts, more than $2.9 million will be available for various projects, including expansion and renovation of our very cramped Health Department, improvement of AV systems that will allow citizens to watch these meetings without even having to come to this building, and a Porter County Public Library project for establishing outdoor learning gardens that will also have the added component of Wi-Fi access. So please join me in recognizing members of this subcommittee. Chair Laura Blaney, representing Porter County Commissioners. Council members Sylvia Graham and Mike Jessen, and citizen members Karen Nelson and Patrice Mullin, and technical non-voting advisory members, HR Director Rhonda Young and Connie Rudd from our Health Department. And lastly, I'd like to recognize some other individuals, the members of our steering committee, Laura Blaney, Jeremy Rivas, and Andy Bozek. Staff support, Kurt Ellis from the Commissioner's Office, Joy Blakely from the Council Office, Deb Care Cook, who took our meeting minutes, and Statler, County Attorney. And with that, I just want to say thank you to everyone for serving...
Let the Chair, yourself, and non-voting...
Yes.
And we did have a citizen member come in, Mitch Peters, who served on the Behavioral Health and Social Services Committee.
I'd just like to add, I'd like to add one more thing. I think throughout the process, we've mentioned it certainly, but you know, your willingness to volunteer to get this all up and running and finished out. I mean, we have seen, if we're paying attention, we had at least one local government in Porter County that appropriated as much as $40,000 for consulting fees on showing them how to do this. We didn't spend a dime on consulting fees, so, thank you. And that's because of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Next up, we have an appointment to, a citizen appointment to the Airport Authority Board. I'm going to open up the floor.
I'll nominate Howard Struble for reappointment.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have an ordinance repealing Chapter 10.24 and adopting new Chapter 10.24 for vehicle weight restrictions. This is the upgrade to the Frosch law, and this is second reading. We held a public comment on this at our last meeting, so we'll move right in, and I'll open it up to the floor with any comments, questions, or motions.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second on second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Pulse Technology. This is an annual maintenance agreement with the amount $11,2360 for the mail machine and the scale at the Valpo courthouse.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on Pulse Technology. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have Quadient. This is a postage meter rental renewal agreement in the amount of $14814 per month.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have 911. This is for the Rave Renewal Quote, the Mobile Safety Rave Renewal Quote. Good morning, Debbie.
Good morning.
Anything you want to add to the request?
I did reach out yesterday in an email, and I know we have a couple of options on the table for contract renewal. At this point, I would recommend one year, simply because the communication I've had with Rave has been regarding additional fees that we will incur based on text notifications to the county, which most of us are familiar with, road closures, construction projects, things of those nature. There's now going to be a fee associated with those. And unfortunately, Rave is still trying to navigate how that will really look on our end. So, based on that, and actually, the most recent communication I've had with Sarah, she's my representative, I've tried to stay on top of this, has still been kind of inconclusive, really not definitive. So my recommendation would be a year, because the service is vital to our community, as I presented to you in my proposal. However, based on the ambiguity of those fees that will be associated, I do just recommend a year, so we can compile that data, revisit this next year, see if it is something we want to move forward with, and also possibly utilize different aspects of the software that we have available to us, and maybe even go a different route with software in the future. So that's my recommendation.
Has the participation in that program increased in the last year or two?
It has. I looked at data, and over the course of the duration of our contract with Rave, we've had, it ebbs and sways. You can see a definite decline in user use and startups during COVID, but it has, over 2021, the usage again has increased. And we consistently do have startups that we can point to specifically, I think last month, we had 33 new accounts. And that is another option as we go forward with the alerting, that we may be able to configure that would better suit the needs that the 911 department, as well as County Highway utilizes as well. So it really is a good benefit to the community.
Okay. And I think it's smart asking only for a year, not knowing what their increased fees are going to be.
Right.
I'll motion to approve.
All right, I have one more question. Was there any way to lock in to the current program, and the fees would come at the end of the contract in three years?
I had requested that. I thought maybe being grandfathered in, we were actually just one of the groundbreaking counties that utilized Rave. And I asked if we could get special favor, and I was told, that's basically the communication that I've had, as recent as yesterday with Sarah, she could not definitively tell us that we could.
Well, it just doesn't, it seems like there should be some concrete terms for a contract.
I completely agree with you, and that's why we're up against a deadline here, because our contract technically expired in July. I was not made aware of it until July 7th. So they were gracious enough to extend us, give us a grace period of an additional two months. And based on my presentation options to you, I had to do this today and have maintained communication with my representative and have not... There are concrete numbers provided in what I sent you regarding the number of operational messages sent. We can buy packages, but again, I'll reiterate what I stated earlier. Last year, we sent out nearly 900,000 operational texts. In the package that we currently have with the 911 center, we have operational texts that will now incur charge, based on the information that was provided, the carriers are passing that cost on to Rave, which in turn trickles down to us. Emergency texts will not. So say, for example, we have someone, you probably have received all of these, we have a missing person, we have the ability to send out those types of texts. Those will not incur charges. But based on the fact that the operational texts will, and knowing that we had 900,000, and also with the increased involvement in the program, as we've seen it consistently grow, that number could well exceed a million next year if we continue down this path. A million texts in our package is another, close to $7,500. If it goes beyond that, we're looking at close to $10,000. That's substantial for a year's contract when we're talking, and not knowing, I completely agree with you, Commissioner Blaney, that we need to have more definitive answers, and that's why I recommend a year.
Well, so what we're not knowing, excuse me, is how many texts we're going to have. It's not that we don't know the pricing.
Well, we do know pricing. We don't know when it's going to begin. That's what they're vague with me about. She's thinking by the end of, before the end of the year, and I'm not sure, that could be now, that could be December 10th, you know? And there's a couple of options she provided that I would, I really need to sit down with Jim, I talked to him briefly last week, and discuss maybe some options that we may consider moving forward regarding the notification process. Ellen Reed has been very integral in this as well, doing a little research prior to my taking this chair, and it's just kind of a compilation, we're going to have to collaborate on the best route. We could feasibly avoid some of these additional costs. However, I'm not sure that will be agreed upon as the best route moving forward, so it's just a discussion we need to have. And unfortunately, where we are now, because of the fact that the contract did lapse, we're faced with, do we not renew, or do we renew for a year until we can compile our data?
And just because I don't remember, do we pay monthly, or do we pay by the year?
It's yearly.
So those last two months were free?
Essentially, I'm thinking they extended it, gave us a grace period until the end of August.
Okay.
But they, so I understand this, they gave us a grace period till the end of August, but they haven't provided what the cost would be for these additional services that we must accept.
Yes.
Well, Deb, don't let the tail wag the dog. We are the client. You tell them, this is what, we'll go in for another year, and/or grandfather the existing contract in for an additional year, or we'll look elsewhere. There's other companies that provide this service. That's what I do.
I am looking into other companies, actually. The umbrella of...
It puts us out of contract, though, and I think that that's something that, I know we don't have our attorney to hear today, because he's not, he's under the weather, but that would be my concern, I guess, is what I'm saying.
And the umbrella, that there's many facets of Rave provided to this county, and we actually have software that Rave has a portal to as well. I think I provided statistics regarding Rapid SOS, which we just had, a few months ago, we had someone that was drowning in Lake Michigan, and we were able to use Rapid SOS, which is a software affiliated with Rave, and find her exact location, pinpointed exactly to where she was, based on this advanced technology. So I am concerned, because Smart 911 falls under this umbrella, as does all of our operational and emergency notifications as well. So that is something, Commissioner Good, that I don't want to lose, I certainly don't want to lose. But I do, I will state here publicly that I feel as though the vagueness with which I haven't presented the facts concerns me moving forward with a longer contract than a year.
As it should, and quite honestly, even if we had been prepared or had wanted to back in June to renew this, we couldn't, because they're not prepared to provide their information on additional charges.
So does the contract, what does it say about these additional charges?
Well, it gives, it breaks it down into how many are used.
I don't understand.
The additional operational, and this is operational only, remember. Operational, and in terms that we'll understand, those operational would be the road closures, which we're very familiar with and benefit our travelers in and around Porter County. They sell them in packages now, whereas they were provided with the contract previously, they're in packages. And because, like I said, we utilized nearly 900,000, that puts us in a higher bracket regarding costs. I would assume that as exposure to this, to this software expands in the county, that number will just exponentially go up anyway. So we're looking at higher fees. So we have a set number, a price, associated with our package that we're allotted, okay? And the options that have been given from Rave are, we can discontinue those, we can possibly, and she's still looking into this avenue of splitting the contract, or she's looking in, she provided an alternative that people can be notified via email only and not text. So that's something that really needs to be agreed upon, I think, with the primary user of these, which I need to discuss further with Mr. Polarek.
Okay, so if we do one year, what is that year?
Well, and again...
What are we agreeing to?
Well, that's a good question, Commissioner Blaney.
I don't want to lose what we have.
I certainly don't either. Where the question lies right now, and the ambiguity, is when they're going to begin assessing or charging these fees. The only information, and this is extremely vague, is before the end of the year. So I just, I have an email in here from Sarah as of yesterday. This was yesterday, right before noon, and she said, "I got pushed in another direction to learn about how billing will work. Stay tuned." So I've maintained contact with this company, and I still feel as though, I don't think that she's being disingenuous. I don't think she really understands as well, because this is something that is new on her end as well. And there's...
Sounds to me like, Debbie, excuse me for interrupting, but it seems to me like, with all the tentacles that this agreement has within our system, it seems to me like your recommendation for one year, the only thing that I would suggest differently was that you may want to have a discussion and let the council know that next year, there may be fees that, you know, so they can anticipate anything that's coming up from that perspective. And I think that that's about all we can do for this one year.
Unfortunately.
And to keep this contiguous, keep it continuous, keep it moving, and go from there. So I would second, if Jim's motion is still good, I would second it. So, but just, that would be my recommendation and my maybe revision. It's not really a revision to the motion, just letting the council know at budget time.
And I don't know, Debbie probably would need to sit down on these, are these, the non-emergency texts? The alert module on our website may serve that purpose. We aren't billed by the number of texts that go out, it's based on the number of subscribers.
So it sounds like you need to be in the discussions and the work process next year as we move forward to pick through this whole thing and find out whether we move the cheese or whether we keep going, but negotiate a good contract with where we are, right?
Yeah, I'm open for as much input and assistance regarding the best route.
There's a lot of technology that, out here, sometimes it's siloed, and I think it would be good in this situation, since it's 911, that we try to be as collaborative as we can with everybody, because everybody's pieces of equipment do different things, so that would be my recommendation. So we have a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you.
Next up, our auditor again.
Okay.
This is the ordinance ratifying Porter County's third proposed investment America Rescue Act funds planned for the American Rescue Act of 2021. This is second reading. Good morning.
Good morning. This should be the same ordinance that you approved at your last meeting on first reading.
Motion to approve on second reading.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just one real quick. Vicki, when can the applicants who were selected, when can they approximately or roughly expect payout?
Well, the next step will have to be approval of the appropriations by the Porter County Council. We won't be able to expend any of the money without an appropriation. And then we will be required to have a written agreement with each of our subrecipients and beneficiaries, and we have the boilerplate agreement already written, and so I think that that process will happen very quickly. Once we get some details about each of the projects, we'll plug it into the agreement, and it will come before you for signing purposes.
Okay.
So next up is the council meeting, right?
Yes.
Yep. Okay. We have a motion and a second for second reading of the ARPA funds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Vicki.
Thank you.
Again. And next up, we have Portage Township ARPA. You want to say something there?
Yes, I'll just address this. This is your next written agreement, this is one with the Portage Township. It's the same agreement that we had with Morgan Township, except we updated it with Portage Township's plan. And we'll be doing this almost at every meeting as these agreements get prepared.
This is the easy part, though, compared to what we've done.
Yes, yes.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second on the Portage Township ARPA agreement.
We have a motion and a second on the Portage Township ARPA agreement. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Thank you. And very quickly, in response to Commissioner Biggs's question, now that Portage Township agreement is approved, they're ready to move forward. And what they'll have to do, they're going to get reimbursement, that was the agreement, and so they'll have to give us proof that they spent this money for the purposes that are in the agreement, and then we will send them a check for reimbursement. It happened pretty quick from our office.
Well, I don't know if you remember, months ago, I asked the same question, I think in a private conversation with you and I, and you said, "Probably August is when we'll title this up." Here we are, August 2nd, you're right on target.
Starting it up, yes, yeah, exactly. Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, Vicki. Next up, we have the animal shelter, Darren Biggs. Just to let everybody know, I've, we have eight items under the animal shelter, these are all transfers, they're not additionals, they're just transfers, and we can do all these in one. So, so when we make the motion and the second, this is for all eight of them. Good morning, Darren.
Good morning.
What we're going to do is have you go down through all these real quick for us, and then we'll vote on them.
Okay. I would like to move money from my household embedding, my other supplies. Didn't bring my glasses, forgive me.
Let, let, Mr. President, can we, I can read these off.
Yeah, you guys, I was just trying to be-
I brought my glasses.
I request a transfer fund, 1,000 account 2230, the household embedding, in the amount of $6,000 to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. Request two, the request to transfer fund 1,000 out of account 2350, building and maintenance supplies in the amount of $1,500 to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. Request number three, a request to transfer funds out of fund 1,000, account 3610, maintenance agreement, in the amount of $500 to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. Request, uh, transfer, request four, to transfer funds out of fund account 1,000, or fund 1,000, to account 3630, equipment other than vehicles, in the amount of 2,000, to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. Request number five, a request to transfer funds out of fund 1,000, account 3950, contractual services, to the amount of $125 to account 3930, dues and subscriptions, to cover the cost of hosting and supporting the animals shelters website. Request number six, a request to transfer funds, fund 107, to account 3130, training and education, in the amount of $1,500 to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. Request number seven, a request to transfer fund, out of fund 4007, account 3340, advertising to the amount of $1,500 to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. And the final request, number eight, a request to transfer fund, out of fund 408, account 3160, vet services, in the amount of $15,000 to account 1120 hourly payroll, to cover hourly payroll through the end of the year. That should do it.
Okay. Any additional questions?
No. I'll make a motion to approve all of the transfer funds.
I'll second it. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Before you go up.
Stay put, yes.
How many years have you been at the shelter now?
I started in 2012 as a dog handler.
2012 as a dog handler, and Darren Biggs is our new shelter director, so.
Thank you.
Coming up through the ranks, and I know the work you do is extensive and not always easy.
No.
We're glad to have you in this position.
It's very rewarding, though, so thank you.
We're always here to answer questions, being new, you're going to have questions, so.
Yes, I am.
Kind of new.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Memorial Opera House. This is a contract by Cabello Associates regarding a free film event to raise awareness titled Addicts Awake. Scott's not here.
Yeah, Scott's out of town.
Yeah, so we-
We have plenty of representatives from the Opera House here.
So.
Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on Memorial Opera House Cabello Associates contract regarding a free film event to raise awareness titled Addicts Awake. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, this is an ordinance creating flood damage prevention. Good morning, Michael.
Good morning.
Missed you this morning.
Yeah, I think that's the first time we've-
Yeah, it is, first one we've had to-
We've phoned or not had a stormwater board meeting.
Yeah.
Busy with other things.
Yeah, oh, I know. This is a ordinance that we've created, and this is on second reading. We had the public comment part of this happen in the last meeting, we didn't have anybody come forward, or anybody for either side. So this is second reading, and this is an ordinance creating flood damage prevention. If there's any questions, Mike, or we can make a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on an ordinance creating flood damage prevention, second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Next up, we have a consultant selection for an engineering design of Bridge 56. This is 1050 South over Pleasant Township Ditch. What we got going here, Mike?
Yeah, so we, the department properly advertised for receipt of letters of interest for design services for this bridge. This is Bridge 56, which carries 1050 South over Pleasant Township Ditch. Earlier this year, back in May, during our annual, or biannual, bridge inspection and inventory process, it was discovered that this bridge had failed, it's now closed, two of the box beams had actually broken, so any further traffic over it would have been at risk of severe damage or injury. So we properly advertised for design services, we received letters of interest from four consultants. The selection committee, which consists of myself, Director Thompson, and our highway engineering project manager, Chris D'Antonio, reviewed and scored all the proposals, and we are recommending that we enter into contract negotiations with the highest scoring consultant of that group, which was Lockmueller Group.
Okay. And how big a bridge is that, Mike, and what's, is this an accelerated contract?
It is an excel, we're going to try to get this thing as open as soon as possible, being that it's closed now. We're shooting for construction third quarter of next year. The bridge will, so yeah, we're a year away from that at least, because we have to go through permitting, right historical, archaeological investigation, wetland permitting, all of those things, and then the design process, and then getting a contractor going. The bridge, yeah, the bridge will need to be lengthened, it's an old, you know, single span, adjacent box beam bridge. We're looking at probably, well, we're looking at a few different options, but likely a single span cast in place reinforced concrete bridge. The span will need to be longer to accommodate the 100-year flood event, but, but we're looking to minimize impacts to the road profile, and minimize right-of-way acquisition and the like by-
You think there will be some-
Project selection.
You think there will be some right-of-way acquisition?
We will need to reacquire the existing right-of-way, that's just NDOT's process here.
Okay.
But we only have a couple landowners that it looks like we'll have to deal with. So, all the, all the factors that typically make a bridge project more complex, this is a little simpler one, lower amount of landowners, a fairly compact bridge footprint, and I think we've got a pretty good path forward. Lockmueller did a really nice job in their proposal, doing some work during the process of putting that proposal together, I think we'll hit the ground running with it.
How long would a project like this take that wasn't expedited?
Yeah, if we were using, if we're going through, if we were using federal funds, this is going to be 100% local funded, if we had some more complexity to it, more likely two, two and a half years, and that depends on permits and right-of-way acquisition, but, but yeah, we're going to try and cut that in half here.
You're still shaving quite a bit of time off, yeah. Uh, motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Lockmueller Group, as chosen as consultant for engineering design of Bridge 56. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Mike, before we get into the last item on there, Jim had told me that you had something you wanted to talk about, a bridge up in Chesterton?
Yeah.
So I figured, since we're on bridges, we might as well just do this now.
Good segue.
Yeah.
So yeah, I did want to provide an update, because I know there's quite a bit of talk in the community, and rightfully so. Our Bridge 168, which carries Brummett Road over the Little Calumet River, will be closed starting next week, likely through next May. It was scheduled for closure beginning in June, with, with our construction efforts to completely replace that bridge. It is in a severely deteriorated condition. We were likely going to have to close it to most traffic, if not all traffic, this year anyway, if we weren't moving towards reconstructing the thing in short order here. The latest inspection and inventory results said that, yeah, we would, we would need to close it likely if we weren't moving to construction. The reason that we didn't, we have, we've had a contractor under contract since second quarter of this year, Dunnett Bay Construction. They were slated to get underway in early June with demolition of the existing bridge, and then replacing with a bridge. We've been delayed now, this is August 2nd, we've been delayed now two full months, and it'll likely be another full month delay by the failure of utilities to move their existing facilities out of the way of the existing construction. That includes NIPSCO, that includes Frontier, and that includes Comcast. And really, in my eyes, there's no excuse for them not having been moved and out of the way in accordance with NDOT's time, and this is an NDOT job, so this is all overseen, yes, by us, but also by NDOT and their personnel. There's no reason that these utilities weren't in the way, or out of the way, in accordance with our schedule. So unfortunately, we were, if we started June, we would have likely been able to reopen the bridge by Thanksgiving time, by the time asphalt plants close. But given that delay, given the road widening we're doing, we've got a lot of, we've got some embankment to add, to make, to add, make this bridge more safe and meet current Federal Highway Administration guidelines for bridge design, we've got some poor soils out there, if you're familiar with the area, you've got wetlands on both sides of the road. In order to build the new embankment, there's an extended period of basically overburdening those soils, basically loading them up with the new embankment and tracking settlement. Per the geotechnical engineering report, at least two months of settlement are going to be needed for that embankment, and I assume we're probably going to need a couple more months than that. I mean, that's just my gut feeling on it. So with that embankment construction, we would be unable, at this point, we're unable to complete the road before asphalt plants close in the fall. So that's why we're looking at the extended closure, starting this month, and extending through basically next May, until asphalt plants open back up and we can finish the project. So we realize this will have an impact on local residents, on the school district, on emergency responders, so we are coordinating with all parties. They're aware of the closure, we've got some probably additional coordination with emergency response, and I spoke with Commissioner Biggs about that yesterday, just to make sure that, you know, folks that receive fire and emergency services are still served, and served in a, in a relatively timely manner. There will be some delays, because the road will be closed in terms of how you can get to one point or the other, but we're doing, we're doing all that we can to push this forward as quick as possible. And of course, the delays are going to result in contract price increases from our contractors as well. We are going to push those all back onto the utilities, so we'll have a little bit of a fight on our hands with those utilities, but I think we're fully justified in seeking those, basically those damages from the utilities. So I'm happy to entertain any questions from, that's sort of a brief summary, just on what happened, and what we're looking at here in terms of timeline, I'm happy to entertain any questions from the board.
Yeah, we spoke, Mike, I mean, it's, I know this is going to be a big, to a lot of the residents who live in the immediate area, there are big inconvenience to be moved around. You know, my concern, I have more of a concern about the railroad, just tracks down the road blocking that east route, especially for emergency response vehicles.
Sure.
And as you, as you pointed out, we're, we're in contact with them, and, you know, letting them know what's going on, and we're, we're in contact, we've reached out to the railroad, let them know what's going on.
Right, and that's Norfolk Southern is, is the particular railroad in question.
Right, and we just can't, we can't accept that, they can't, they're going to have to stop someplace else, you know, for the, for, at least for the next year. But on, you know, on the bright side is, that road, that bridge is going to be beautiful, and it's, if you're familiar with that bridge, it's there now. If you're walking down that bridge in a car, two cars past each other, there's really no place to walk.
Correct.
Which, that will change, it'll be a much larger bridge, and because it's, we're in a very sensitive environmental area there, because of the little cow, bringing in the soils is something we wouldn't normally have to do on most, the vast majority of our other bridge projects. It's just, it is what it is, but at the end of the day, we're all going to have a much nicer bridge, a much safer bridge to cross, so bear with us.
Unfortunately, yeah, unfortunately, some short-term pain for, for what will be a very necessary, and as you said, Jim, functional and aesthetically beautiful bridge and new river crossing there.
Right. Mike, all the, you know, usually when we get started on a project like that, there's massive mailers that go out to everybody involved, I'm sure all the utilities were notified, I just want to make sure, so we-
Of course.
We need to hold the line-
Yes.
And get all the-
Yes.
-paperwork and-
And, and our consultant, USI, our designer on this bridge, did all that in accordance with state statute, so we've got documentation that they did, you know, coordinate properly with the utilities, notify them of when they should start, notify them of when they needed to be completed, so we certainly have that documentation.
And you stated you reached out to them again to, to reach out to the railroad?
To-
Are we, are you doing that internally?
The department has reached out to the Norfolk Southern Railroad, yes. Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Jim.
Um, next up, we have a list here, we're seeking sealed bids for upcoming paving projects, and I think all three of us have looked at the list, correct, and are okay with sending that out. So we figured, since we got some decent paving numbers for our community crossing grants number, this is why we've decided to go out and do an additional here, so we're going to take these roads out, we're going to get a number in, and then we'll open it up here again at a public meeting, and we'll look at it and decide what we want to do, and then send it over to the council, is what we would do. So that's what this is for, so we need a motion and a second to get this out on the streets.
Motion. Second.
So moved too. We have a motion and a second on a seeking sealed bids for upcoming paving projects. All, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. Oof.
Last up, we have Morgan Township Volunteer Fire Department, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
This is an event that happens every year for some year, but this is Morgan Township Fire Department, to use all county roads to deter traffic from State Road 49 between County Road 300 and 400 South for the 19th Annual Malden Day Labor Parade, Labor Day Parade, to be held on Monday 5th, 2022, from noon until 12:30. The Porter County Sheriff's Department will be handling traffic control for detours.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose same sign, motion carries. And we're at the end of our meeting. Anybody wishing to address this board?
Hello, I'm Dawn, living in Buffalo. I just had a couple questions. Okay, with the Memorial Opera House, right now, just a couple questions, like I said. With money, and people feeling more financially burdened by inflation, as you know, it's well over 9.1%, higher prices for food, for gas, for rent, I ask the question again, why now? The Memorial Opera House and the almost $7 million bond, it seems like still an unnecessary luxury spending. We know no services are provided. You know that this- That this is not a good time to be trying to reach in and grab that immense amount of money. I mean, I guess, I guess you don't, thank you.
I was just waiting until you were finished. I didn't want to interrupt you.
That's fine, I'm finished.
I do support this project that is, right now, estimated at $6.5 million, not $7.
You're right, 6.8, I apologize.
6.5.
Okay.
But at any rate, that's an estimate, so, and it is still a lot of money. I do think during times of economic distress that community gathering and the arts are very important. And the proposal for this money should not reach into people's pockets. It should come out of the foundation interest. That's my plan, it's not approved, but that's what I'd like to see happen. Thank you. You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Hi.
Hi, Karen Nelson. I'm just up here to commend and thank all the Porter County ARPA committee members for their diligence in distributing the funds in an equitable way. As a subcommittee member, I know this was a very arduous and honorable task. And let's face it, we had a lot more public comment than we did volunteers. I would like to thank the members of the steering committee, especially Commissioner Blaney and Vicki Gorbannick, who made great efforts to ensure that this was, this endeavor was fair, it was valid, and properly researched. I especially
That's a few times.
I sincerely appreciate their continued and unwavering dedication to all Porter County residents. COVID is not over, but with you all at the helm, I know that we can tackle the future, whatever it throws at us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning all. My name is John Paluso, I'm a Valparaiso resident. I wanted to come before you and thank the commissioners for the support so far for the Memorial Opera House project. I have been involved with the Opera House for better part of 15, 16 years now. I've had conversations with all of you at various points in time. About 14 years ago, I met with Mr. Biggs. I understand the commitment at that point in time to making sure that we're good stewards of the money that the county is putting into the building itself, making sure that the facility is available for the constituents of the community to use. I do think it's important to touch on the fact that, again, this is not about the county putting on productions. This is about the county preserving the asset that it has, which allows the local community to gather together, to exchange ideas, to put on performances that entertain, but also inform. There's also a significant economic benefit to this, in that the Opera House draws thousands of people every year from all around the region to come into Porter County. When they do that, they also patronize local businesses. So while it will not necessarily show up on the Opera House books or on the county books immediately as related to the Opera House, when those people come and patronize local businesses, you get more tax revenue from it. That is an important factor that's not necessarily been brought out, but it is something for the local businesses to take into consideration when deciding whether or not to support or scold you for whatever you're doing. The most important feature to me, though, is this is a facility that was dedicated with a promise to veterans. The people that fought to make this country what it was during the Civil War and to preserve some sense of community, that's what they fought for, and it was promised to them that this building would stand as an available opportunity for the community to continue gathering together, because that's what the Civil War was fought for, is the ability to maintain a community. That's what it still does. That's what we want it to be able to do. We have many other venues for many other functions. We have the Expo Center, which we improved appropriately because it brings the community together in various ways. The Opera House is one more aspect of that. It's a different place for different types of gatherings, but we've improved the downtown tremendously over the last 10 years. This is part of that. We want the community to have space to come together in the different ways that they need. The Opera House stands for that. It's already an asset. Not doing anything now doesn't save you money, it just costs you money, because then the asset continues to fall apart and it's more expensive to replace. Addressing the concerns over inflation, everyone knows that inflation exists. No one's going to dispute that. But it doesn't get less expensive over time to address this. If it's gone up 9% now and it goes up another 3% after inflation comes back down, you're still paying more if you delay it further. So you can let the facilities that you're responsible for crumble and pay more later and have an embarrassment on our hands when the county fails to be good stewards for the asset we have, or we can take responsibility now to finish our responsibility to our community and to our veterans to make sure that the asset we have stays available for future community members to take advantage of, come together, and continue forming a community which brings people in instead of shuts people out. So thank you for your support. I hope to see that continue. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that, and just wanted to come back and say that the building has been being kept up. 2013, the roof and the structural upgrades were done, $315,000. So 2017, they received a humongous grant, $35,000. I mean, I can go on and on and on. Oh, these are, these are actual numbers, I've looked them up. I know that these are rigid numbers. So people in the community are hurting, okay? It's choose gas, it's choose food. Trust me, I'm there, been there, okay? And I just think that right now, this is not the time to be putting that kind of money, and it's not even
Dawn.
An upgrade.
Dawn.
This is more
Please address this board.
This is not an upgrade, because the building is not falling apart. I walked around the building, I videoed the whole entire building, there's not bricks laying everywhere. The building, it's a historical building, I respect that. I respect it was built for our veterans, but I don't respect what is being proposed to be done with it. It has nothing to do with veterans, it has nothing to do with COVID, because that's what we originally started with, was $5.5 million for COVID money. Just wanted to put that back out there.
Anybody else? I'll hold my comments until we get to the portion of either this board or the Foundation Board to address the proposal. I think it's highly premature to be making statements about what that 6.5 or whatever that amount is today is going to address over there. So I'm going to, I'm going to hold my comments until we get to that portion of business. I would again just say that I said at the last meeting, is because of the financial condition of this county, we were able to give out over $15, $20 million to non-for-profits and other things. And a lot of this money that we're giving out is for construction projects. So how can we say on one hand that we can't do this over here, yet on the other hand, we can say it over here? And it is an election year, and we all know what's going on here. And, you know, it's going to play out at some point, but it just seems, it just seems disingenuous and it just doesn't seem correctly to sit there and say that, you know, we pat ourselves on the back, that we give some money out for all these people. And like I said, these are building projects and they're going to run into the same, same problems that we would run on this. I'm in the private world, I'm getting ready to do a hotel in Crown Point in the next 45 days, and we're going out to market and we're going to bid it. And we're going to see where the market is. And we know the risk, we know what needs to happen, but we're not going to give up and we're going to keep looking at the project and we're going to keep moving forward. And that's what I think we're doing here as well. So that's my only comment. I said it at the last meeting, it's nothing different than what I said this time. So, but with that, I see we have someone else coming up. Kay, you want to come up and speak? Thank you.
Again, I did speak last time, I again want to thank you for all you've done, not only for the Opera House, but the Expo Center, the animal shelter, the library, and all the county assets that do fall under your responsibility, and I thank you for taking care of those. And this is just the next one up to the plate, I feel. I understand inflation, I understand taxes, I understand that people are hurting and gas prices are crazy. I do understand all that, but maybe you can clarify for me, I want to make sure I do understand this correctly, that this is not an either-or project, that these funds come from interest that is raised, that would not be put back into other projects. I mean, if we don't have this, if we lose the Opera House, we lose the income that we are raising from the Opera House, and those funds don't necessarily address the other concerns that the former speaker mentioned. I might be wrong on that, I'd like you to clarify that for me, just to make sure that I'm not mistaken.
Thanks.
Thanks, Kay. The operating expenses of the Opera House are covered by their ticket sales and grants and the foundation, the Opera House Foundation, and all of their hard work and contributions. So the operating expenses are covered, and Kay is correct that those dollars, not necessarily the hospital interest dollars that we're talking about funding this project, but the operational dollars, the budget of the Opera House, if the Opera House were to go away, so would those dollars. They wouldn't be there to go to something else.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just wanted to say one last thing. To say that this has nothing to do with veterans, it's just not accurate. Our Memorial Opera House Director, Scott McDonald, has met with the groups there, they've met there for years, they continue to meet there. They're very on board and involved in this process.
Well, since, so if we're going to, we're going to open it up, we'll open it up. Here's what I, here's what I know. I know that we're at least $2 million underwater in our ability to maintain our county roads. I know that we're millions of dollars in the red in our ability to address stormwater issues that need, should be addressed as soon as possible. I know that we don't have, or we have not identified, a funding source, a permanent funding source for our ambulance services here in Porter County. And I know that, that, when that hospital was sold in 2007, there was talk, and many of these people, many of the people who are sitting, are sitting on the county council, and I don't, I don't believe Jeff was, Jeff wasn't around at that time, but the talk was to use the proceeds of the hospital on health-related
No, it was not.
The
The hospital foundation money?
The hospital foundation money.
Absolutely not.
The
I went down and spoke
The record is riddled with it.
To the state legislature about that.
Well, I, I am not in any way in favor of taking $6.5 million of hospital interest money, or bond for that amount, and using hospital interest money to pay it back under these conditions. I think it's irresponsible at best to even consider it. I don't, I don't understand why we're doing it. Nobody is advocating that we don't take care of the Opera House. The Opera House is being taken care of. Nobody has put in front of me a plan to fix what's broken in the Opera House. What has been put in front of me is a renovation and increase the square footage over there in its operations, and in operations we already subsidize. We, we have a, we have a wage study that we haven't even gotten the results back yet in county government. We don't even know what that, that is going to mean to us moving forward in our ability to pay employees more where we should be paying them more. Nobody talking about this dislikes the Opera House. My record as a commissioner clearly shows that. So my issue is not fixing what's broken over there, as we should fix whatever is broken over there. My issue is spending millions of dollars to increase the operations of the theater part of it. And I would like to know, and somebody can point it out to me, when county, when did county government vote to be in the theater business? When did we vote to be in the entertainment business? We can't, we can't be all things to everybody. If you want good roads to run your school buses on and run your cars on to go to work, if you want, if you want flooding to be addressed in county government, if you want responsible people working inside the institution of county government, that has to be invested in as well. You don't know broke until we start having people leave here for better jobs, because they're not being paid enough. And that is an unmitigated fact. The cost of living continues to rise, and we have to address that whether we like it or not. We all love the Opera House. Oh, I do, ma'am. There is absolutely no basis for you to say that. I do. My record shows that. I've attended events there and I've supported it up here. But you're asking me to support the spending of millions of dollars that is owed to the public. The public owns that money. At a time when people are struggling to put gas in their car, people are struggling to put food on their tables. And jobs, and jobs, as inflation keeps rising, people are going to lose their jobs. It is, it is the wrong project at the wrong time using the wrong amount of, wrong monies. There. I wasn't going to say anything, but
Again, John Paluso, I do live in Valparaiso. I just wanted to address very quickly, when we ask about what the Opera House does, it's not just theater, and I think that is a common misconception, but if you pose it as a, when did the county get into the theater business, it doesn't. The county has venues. When did the county get into the entertainment business? We built an amphitheater downtown so that you can have public gathering places. The Expo Center, the entertainment events. Why? Because that's part of what the county is doing, is not providing the entertainment necessarily, but providing venues where the public can gather together. And that was the foundational purpose of the Opera House. It was built in order to provide a public forum for people to come
I didn't catch your first name.
Together.
John. John, let me just, I know where you're going with this. Let me, let me just make you aware of something.
Sure.
The county is responsible for that building, the structure of that building.
Correct.
To say the county is not in the theater business simply isn't true. We have made huge expenditures out there for sound systems, for, you know, for a drake for the, for the, for the stage, and other expenditures that have nothing to do with the structure of that building.
But when you're talking about being in the theater business, being in an entertainment business, you're talking about providing infrastructure that allows a lot of different types
Who do you think is paying the benefits to those employees out there? The taxpayers of Porter County.
Of course they are, because that
Because we're in the theater business.
No, you're not. You're in the business of providing a venue, just like all of the other venues, the animal shelter. When did the, why are we in the animal shelter business? Because there is a need in the community for that. Why do we have an amphitheater? Because it provides a public space for people to gather together and perform the mission that the council and the commissioners have already vowed to support. So I understand that you don't support it, I'm not asking you to. I'm simply saying
Support what?
Any of the future proposals for the Opera House. I understand that you have your opinion that for some reason, certain expenditures are appropriate and some not. However, when we're trying to draw a distinction of what money to spend when, there's a difference between saying, we're not going to support this money now, and we're not going to support an expansion because that would allow for an increase in a change in operations. We do that all the time. The downtown in Valparaiso and in Chesterton, where they're doing development, it does draw people in. As the community changes, the needs change, and so this is offering additional opportunities for more people to get involved and come together and interact with each other in a positive way, and in a way that invites people in from around the community, from around the region. That is what it exists
And I respect, I respect that.
Just
Go ahead.
Wait one second.
Go ahead.
I understand the concern about spending money, but to say that it's, it's not needed at this time overlooks the fact that this is the very time when people need things to gather together over. It's an election season, I understand that that's going to shade the way that certain things are presented. But, for instance, you can have political-related events at the Opera House as well, that's been done before. It's not just about theater. It's about places for different community events to take place. There are weddings, there are concerts, there are debates that happen there. There's all sorts of different events that occur, and I'm glad that you've attended performances there, I think that's wonderful, I hope you'll continue to do that. But I want more people to have more opportunities to come together and not less. And that's all this is about.
And I don't disagree with you.
Then I think
And let's, let's, let's say I'm talking about a P3, a public-private partnership, a public-private partnership, to where those who are supporting it, those who think that this is, that this is a golden goose out there, that there's thousands and thousands of people who support this operation out there, let's, let's put it, let's put it out there. Let's put it out there to
out there to where we're leasing that building out to a private contractor, to who can put on plays, who can make the, the, the facility available for all these other events that you, you speak of.
You're free to draft whatever you want, and you're the part of the commissioners. So if that's something that you'd like to pursue, you could do that.
Well, we just have a fundamental-
Sure.
Yeah, and I, I apologize for raising my voice, but this is, this, this whole, this whole conversation has, has, over the last year, has, has really just spun out of control. We, we-
In what way?
Well, it's gone for, it's gone from 3.5 million dollars to now 6.5 million dollars. Let's start there, number one. And we, then we were gonna pay for it with ARC funds, and then that was to our, and now we're talking about-
Which it did qualify for, which it did qualify for.
So it could have been through ARC funds, which you, you didn't want it to happen, but instead-
Of course I didn't want it to happen.
Okay. I mean, and that, that's what I'm not sure I understand, the purpose of saying, we don't want, you can say that you want the community to have places to come together, you just don't want to pay for it. Well, that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. This building already exists. The improvements that have been made in the past, you reference a few of them over time, patched some of the problems, but not all of the problems. You're not going to save money by letting it fall into-
Look, 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 you're trying to pass, you're trying to pass that facility, you're trying to pass that-
You're not going to save that money.
Look, I got the table. You're trying to pass this off of-
I was gonna say, I'm a public commissioner, you interrupted me.
Excuse me. Yeah, and you keep rambling. But you're trying to pass that off as making that available to the people.
Right.
You can't walk in there without paying a fee, okay? Let's get that straight.
You can go in there anytime you want, there are live programs that are available without ticket prices. I know, because I'm there quite a bit.
Well, we have a fun- we have a fundamental difference in-
Yes.
I don't think government should be paying for that. Okay?
Okay. Then vote against it.
Well, I will.
Great. But then we don't need to have that conversation all the time when you're misrepresenting what's happening at the Opera House.
I'm not misrepresenting at all what's happening at the Opera House.
You don't know that's happening, that's one thing.
Yes, I do know what's going on.
But we wanna make sure that people have accurate information. So for example, if you're trying to figure out what information is out there, that you've gone and researched about where these projects came from. I understand that you know that they're worth $35,000, but what that was used for is different. And so when you come in here and you try and say that we're misusing public funds by not, that we're just expanding it, what plan is in front of you? The plan that was there tells you what it's there for, that a significant portion of that is for replacing the plumbing, it's for replacing the electrical, it's for replacing all of the different things that desperately need upgrade there, that has to get taken care of, just like you take care of it for any other county building. You don't have to agree with this particular function, but it is still your responsibility that this is still part of the government. This is still something that Porter County's responsible for.
And nobody has said, nobody has said that.
And you're either responsible for it, or you cannot be responsible. You can be irresponsible. I think that we should continue to fund the things that bring the community together, and that give people a chance to be involved, so that they're available for everybody.
Well, I just wanna, I wanna make sure that the people who live in this county can afford to get, still afford to get together.
And they can, but nothing that-
Yeah, well, we're spending, we're spending upwards of $7 million of the taxpayers' money on, on, on a building that we, we serve none of our services out of. None of them.
Nothing, nothing happened?
During, during a recession, no less.
We're not actually in a recession yet.
Okay.
So if we wanna make sure that we have chances to, to converse going forward, I would like that. I think that this is a good conversation to have. But I wanna make sure that it's not being misrepresented. Trying to say that gas prices mean that you can't take care of county buildings going to the future is preposterous. It's a red herring. It doesn't, that, that is two things that are fundamentally different. Not doing this project doesn't make gas prices any more affordable. Doing this project doesn't make gas prices any more expensive.
No, but it does give us additional revenue to consider, to, to pay for an ambulance contract, to do more roadwork, to, to maybe address some more stormwater. Absolutely.
Those funds, those funds can be, there are many things that we have to do. We have to be able to walk and chew gum at the same time. This is one of the things that is being proposed, that serves a function for society. You don't have to-
Do you realize if we fund that through the, through the interest of the foundation, that that brings us right up to the line? There is no more money to fund anything. What's available in the interest account. That's gonna bring us right up to the line of what our, we're, we're able to fund anything, moving forward with it. That's my point here.
Okay.
Nobody is arguing, you know, if, if things were drastically, drastically different up here, I would, we would have, be having a different conversation. But things aren't, things aren't good right now.
But we've had this conversation for 10 years, it's not happened yet.
Sir, you don't set on the county council or the board of commissioners, and you have no idea what, what, what our responsibilities are, and the amount, the, the amount of shortages that we had to address them.
I do. I understand that there are, there are limits to financial capabilities. I don't think that we've actually hit that yet, and I don't think that you get around financial responsibilities by not living up to them, and that's what it is.
You say, you don't think that we've hit that yet. How do you, how do you know that?
How do I know what?
How do you know what our financial ability is at this point to fund anything?
We were just going through the past meeting, going through and passing additional expenditures that were needed. And you agreed with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I did.
Those amounts were appropriate.
Those weren't, those were ARC funds.
Okay, some of them.
Those weren't, they, those funds weren't coming out of the general fund, and they weren't coming out of, out of hospital proceeds.
Sure. These aren't coming out of, I'm happy to continue the conversation, I don't wanna keep everybody else here. But I think that this is something for the public to understand. There are different ways to pay for things. If there's a different proposal for how to maintain the building with the functionality that it's need, I'm, I'm sure everybody would be interested in it. But that's a conversation that we need to-
Well, we agree on that.
Instead of simply saying, "We shouldn't do anything right now, we're gonna prioritize everything else, but not get to this building because you don't personally like the function that it has." Okay, that's fine.
Well, I've never said that. But we agree on this, and I'm gonna finish out here. We're, we're, we agree on this. There's different ways of paying for it.
Sure.
And I think that public tax dollars should not be used to, to increase the operations of, of the Opera House over there. That's what I think. We're gonna disagree.
But I'm just trying to underst- make sure that everybody understands this point.
That's fine.
Did you vote to approve the expand, the expansion over the Expo Center?
Yeah.
It could bring in different programming?
Sure do. Sure do.
So you're in favor of the county expending tax money in order to ensure that they have programming at different places? Did you approve the amphitheater?
We didn't expand, we didn't expand the size of the Expo Center.
You expanded the capabilities specifically so that you could bring in more events and rev- and revenue.
Well, well, through renovation, sure.
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 There's not, never been a new building built over there?
Not by us. Not, not in my, not in my recent memory. Nope.
Buildings didn't go by themselves. At some point, you have to expand.
The Fair Board may have built something over there.
As the population expands, you need to expand the capabilities in order to meet that need. That's all this is about, and I, I look forward to another conversation.
Well, you're saying it to meet that need.
Yes.
I see no proof where that need is required.
Okay.
Although I have plenty of proof, we need more revenue in here to operate.
Sure. So then bring in more people into the region, which then spend more money and increase your tax base. That's what this does.
Sir, I respect your opinion, but I'm not, I'm not gonna agree with you. But thank you, have a nice day.
Thank you. Next up, Sylvia, over here.
Yes. Sylvia Graham, Porter County Council, 178 West, 150 North, Valparaiso. I came in a little bit late, and I just wanna make a few remarks that I agree a lot with what John said. Jim, you and I have not had the opportunity to talk about this, but the council did ask for a specific study on, on this. We have addressed, in the recent past years, of how we can improve our county buildings. And we have done this, and we've done it in, in good fashion. And I'm concerned that we are not actually the Memorial Opera House and the Sheriff's Museum, and the garage for the sheriffs, where, where we fix the cars. There's several things that need to be cleaned up and fixed. These are the last things in a, in a general maintenance deal that we've been doing with the county buildings. And I am, I'm uncertain as to why this is drawing such ire. And because if you look at it, we spent quite a bit of money just getting back the, the old sheriff's building that was sold earlier. It was sold, but we needed it back into the county government so we could increase the amount of government. Government grows just like our population grows, whether we like it or not. And that had, that was maybe a mistake, but it had to be done. We spent money, brought it into the fold. We remodeled it. We need to make, in my opinion, the Sheriff's Museum, as well as the Memorial Opera House, to, to have them grow, to make them have more room, to have people enjoy, to bring venues, to whatever. And I just feel like it's part of our responsibility to, to make sure that this gets done. And the longer we put it off, the more it is going to cost. That's just the way it is. I, I can understand, we can agree to disagree. But it's just part of, I believe, good county government is taking care of our buildings. That's part of our charge, of being in charge of taking care of county business. That's my opinion.
I agree that we should be taking care of county buildings.
Right.
I agree.
And that will, that will be done. It will be done. But, and I don't see the great,
well, I'm gonna let it go at that.
Thank you, Sylvia. Next up?
Hi, my name is Heather Clark, and I live here in Valparaiso. And I moved here 10 years ago from Lake County, where I lived for 38 years. And in part, the reason I moved here was from the, for the Opera House. Because we were coming here a lot, my husband and I met doing theater. But we love Valparaiso. We loved Porter County. And we were here, coming here, and when we were looking to move 10 years ago, this seemed like a great place. And we knew about it because of the Opera House. Now I'm a mom, I've got two kids, high school, middle school. And they, they are involved at the Opera House. They're doing, my daughter is autistic. She is a part, like, they're working through the Penguin program. Like, it just is really a community asset, and I'm really grateful for it. I'm not on the board, I'm not, like, I just, I really like it. I really like the people there, and I'm grateful for the support. Thank you.
Anybody else? One more. Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Penny Cusmak, 258 Haas Street, Valparaiso, Indiana. And I, you know, it's, I, I see that it's a, it's a kind of a sticky rook. It, there's a lot of people that love the Opera House. I've always liked it. But the idea that, that right now, and I think the right now thing is, is something to be considered, that we should take the money to, to completely rehab the whole thing into a whole nother entity than, from what it is right now. And, and the, the price tag is the thing I think people are concerned about. I, I used to do the, the backup for someone who did masonry restoration. And so I'm quite aware of what it costs to do those kind of repairs. And it's nowhere near 6.5 million. In fact, you could do a lot of what needs to be done as far as maintenance-ing that building for, for under $500,000. And if you added plumbing and other things, I, I'm, I'm aware of a lot of, of costs for the things like that in old buildings. There's just, the repairs that need to be done on those buildings could be done way, way less right now. And, and anybody that has a family or, and pays bills understands having a budget. And there's times you do things, and there's times you don't do things. And sometimes you don't like it. You know, maybe you want all new furniture, but, you know, right now, you, you don't wanna go into debt for it. And, and as far as, as our economy is concerned, and people talking about gas prices, well, I'm old enough to remember when we had almost identical circumstances 50 years ago. And I was clueless then, and nobody really knew what was going on. The gas prices went up, and I'll tell you what happened. The gas prices went up. Next thing you know, the food prices went up. Next thing you know, nobody was buying anything other than food and gas and utilities and their mortgage. So they didn't need a lot of other things, and people started losing their jobs. And my husband was a mechanical engineer and had a good job, and, you know, you wouldn't think he would lose his job, well, he did. And so if, if this continues, I'm telling people, it's not just a hiccup. People are going to lose their jobs. And there's going to be a problem. And people need to wake up to that. I'm old enough, I saw it happen, and I know where this goes. So to take a, a jump right now into spending a lot of money, it's a lot of money, on, on the Opera House is just, I think, irresponsible. And also, I've talked to a lot of people from other parts of the county who do not live in Valparaiso, who don't understand why the money's being spent in Valparaiso. There's kind of a little myth that all the money goes to Valpo. And I said something like, "Well, why don't you show up at the commissioners' meeting?" And say so. Cause these are important people that mentioned this to me. And they said, "Well, it's at 10 o'clock in the morning, and we work." So a lot of the people that come here are either retired or lucky enough to be able to come to this meeting at 10:00 in the morning. And there's a lot of people that I think would come and say what they felt about this. And it's not pro or anti Opera House. It's about the fact that we really are in the beginnings of a recession. I saw it happen. I was clueless when it happened to me. But I, I'm here to warn all of you that unless something happens soon, we're in trouble. And it gets a lot worse. People that don't think they would ever lose their jobs will end up out of work, and there won't be the revenue coming into the county. There won't be the revenue coming into the federal government. And there won't be the revenue coming in, and the money is going to be spent on the Opera House. And I can see where people are having a problem with that. And it's got nothing to do with the theater or anything else. You know? I love old buildings. I have, my house was built in 1854. So I understand the desires, but desires and, and logic are coming into crosshairs with one another here. So, thank you.
Next.
Linda Rodenbarger, Valparaiso, Indiana. Sylvia, thank you for your words. And I guess I just wanna say, is there ever a good time for anything? Was there a good time to have kids? Was there a good time to buy a house? I say with a heartfelt plea, let's vote for this, and let's get it done. It's quite a historic building in our town, and I'd hate to see anything happen to it. I want it to stay forever, and, you know, so many places, "Oh yeah, let's tear that down, let's start over." Look at, next to the Roosevelt Hospital, "Oh yeah, we'll start that building, let's tear it down." Let's get it done. Let's, let's support our community, and this offers a great venue to a different clientele than some of the other things in our town. And I'm wholeheartedly in favor of this.
Thank you. And with that, we stand in recess. Thank you.